Alright ladies and gentlemen, we're going to the regular meeting. It is Monday, February 3rd, 2020. It's 6:00 PM. Captain, take the roll.
Trusty Lionel?
Here.
Trusty Sullivan?
Here.
Trusty Wood?
Here.
Trusty Mahoney?
Here.
Trusty Andreessen?
Here.
Trusty Coonsy?
Here.
President Miller?
Here. And if you'd like to join in the flag, ladies and gentlemen.
My flag will be just to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that takes us first item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items only. Do you have any who would like to address the board? I think none, but we'll write on consent. We have three items on here. Any trustee you want to add or leave them in this? Now I'll take a motion to approve the second agenda.
I can't make a motion to approve the consent of agenda items. Item A, motion to approve a special village board meeting minutes dated January 30th, 2020. Item B, motion to approve a resolution approving the content and/or release certain executive session minutes of regular and special meetings of the president and board trustees. Item C, motion to approve an ordinance authorizing abatement of the tax levy for the general obligation bond. 2012 A, general obligation bond bond. 2012 B, 2012 tip revenue bonds round 25 tip and general obligation lines 2015 and 2016.
Second. Okay, so we go to this. Captain.
Trusty Lionel?
Yes.
Trusty Sullivan?
Yes.
Trusty Wood?
Yes.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
Yes.
Okay, there are no other requests new, which is first thing here is a motion to, uh... Don't use another vehicle for any motion on this place.
I'm in motion to approve a resolution. We can do what you say. Go ahead. I'm looking at the resolution declaring a police vehicle to be surplus and authorizing nomination of said vehicle to Pink Heels Tri-City's chairman. I'll say it.
Pretty good. Any discussion on this one? Captain.
Yeah, I'm just, I just want to say I, I think this, it seems like from what I can tell, a very worthwhile organization. However, I don't think that the, uh, this is really the right way to go about it. None of the public funds or assets, so it's not really what government wants to do.
Good. Anyone else? Captain.
Trusty Lionel?
No.
Trusty Sullivan?
Yes.
Trusty Wood?
No.
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
Yes.
Okay, pretty good. Alright. Next thing we have is the recommendation of Ryan Miles.
Thank you. This is always a night that I look forward to of course because we're highlighting good work in both people in the police department. Last year, you may remember our first police officer of the year, Joe Riddell. Joe, raise your hand. He's bided his head, he might recognize him from last year. Ryan, would you show him your face? So it's gratifying to see so many people here, and I want to ask Ryan if you would introduce your family, please.
Yeah, I'm here with my dad, Steve, my mom Stacy, my brother Andrew, my fiance Nicole, and her parents, Mike and Tammy.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me tell you quickly about the process that we use. It's really a lot of, uh, award process. In December, I put out an email to everybody reminding them that in January, I'd be asking for nominations and reiterating what the award signifies. In written policy, the officer of the year is defined as the officer who has made the most significant contribution to the police department throughout the year, and who through his dedic, his or her dedication, loyalty, and consistently high quality of work sets themselves apart as officers to be emulated. So then in January, we asked for nominations and the full-time or part-time officers. In our January staff meeting, which is attended by the sergeants, deputy chief, and myself, we reviewed the seven nominations that we received, discussed them thoroughly, and the qualifications, and then a vote is taken. The nominees this year were Sergeant Andy Ritter. Andy, are you here?
Yep, back corner.
Thank you. Detective Jessica Marinos, who's not here because of death in the family today, and Officer Ryan Miles. All three have also been nominated last year. And so Ryan Miles was selected, and I would like to say a little bit about why. Ryan was selected because of his consistently high quantity and quality of work. He has a passion for police. He made 39 arrests or suspended for revoked drivers during the year. 10 DUI arrests, 27 outside warrant arrests, 49 arrests for possession of marijuana, controlled substance, or drug paraphernalia. Most of these categories, Ryan had the highest number of arrests in the department. But arrest statistics only tell part of the story. Sometimes the best work that's done doesn't even show up as a statistic. And I'd like to cite just one example of many. Last year, Ryan got recognition from a married couple who had made a report, a missing person report on their adult son, and they were very concerned about his welfare. Sensing their sincerest concern, Ryan worked on this case for nine straight hours, contacted friends and associates, searching the internet, and located the man in a hillside motel. He had the hillside police make contact at the motel, and they said the man is fine, he's a voluntary missing person. Ryan was able to contact the parents and relay their concerns, and they were abusive in their praise. Ryan has also been selected for his demonstration, demonstration of our stated values throughout his work, including, he uses only, my, and he uses, this is what I see. He uses only the reasonable force necessary to accomplish a lawful purpose. He provides fair treatment and equal protection under the law to all people. It's without exception. He's honest, he performs his work with integrity, he views his badge not as a symbol of justive authority, but as a symbol of the public's trust in him. He holds himself to a higher standard on and off the job. So we're proud of Ryan's values and the work he performs and the results that he achieves. It's my pleasure to award him this plaque for each and every police officer of the year. Ryan, we appreciate his present in recognition of outstanding performance reflecting the values of a superior, on course and professional ability. He's subject to praise. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very good. Okay. One more item on here, I feel nervous, could you guys leave? Do I hang on that for you?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, one more item, I feel nervous, let's just say that. We have a motion on that.
Uh, we have a motion for discussion about the extra video gaming licensing.
Seven.
Okay, discussion of the administration, I have a little bit more.
Um, sure, I can, I can introduce you. So, um, I think we did talk to you about two years ago today. Jay, the owner of Amstar at the time, came and requested a video gaming license from the village. In order to facilitate that request, the village board would need to grant a consumption license for liquor, essentially creating a tavern within the gas station or some sort of restaurant within the gas station. So at the time, uh, the village board, they discussed that concept, and it, uh, there was a four to three consensus not to create additional liquor license and video gaming permit that would be, um, required. So, I think if you recall at our last board meeting, Jay came and spoke during public comment to make a new appeal to the board. His appeal centered around, um, other gas stations having video gaming and also the opening of Casey's and having a difficult time competing with, um, with that gas station and other gas stations. Um, so I did provide you with that background in the memorandum. You know, at the time, two years ago, uh, my recommendation was to deny this request. I can say that my recommendation hasn't changed only because the fact that the state law seems clear. Video gaming is for truck stops, um, not for gas stations. Also, we have denied a similar, the same request from Thornton's in the past. Thornton's did acquire additional land to become a truck stop, and so they were granted the video gaming license. But you don't have intentions of becoming a truck stop. Um, and so we do have two other gas stations in town that could make the same request. So the issue before the board really is are uncomfortable granting a consumption license and the operations that go along with that consumption license within the gas station. My recommendation is no for the, for those reasons. I also don't feel like it's, um, maybe fits the quaint, uh, small-town deal that we're looking for as you're entering on River Street, but, um, that's my recommendation. And it's up to the board to provide direction, and if you do want to provide direction in that, then we'll come back with a, um, an ordinance that would create an additional liquor license and create the additional video gaming permit for this establishment. Are you thinking questions, or are you, you're from the owner, he's here?
I guess, honestly, I don't have thoughts, but I'll probably post one, or comment on it. And again, your points are all very well taken. Um, you know, as far as fitting the quaint nature of the village, again, this is not something that's going to change the exterior of the facade of the building, where you know, so it's all, you know, it's not gonna be like flashy lights like Vegas or the Fourth of July City or something like that. Um, also, I mean, our quaint little village has got the second highest density of video gaming machines in the state of Illinois already. And at this point, we're moving deck chairs about 10 feet. As far as why I'm, I'm supportive of it, you know, we would have to create a consumption license. To be told, I don't see there being a lot of consumption anyway, but what would, would, would do it, my, my opinion is, you know, allow them to generate some revenue off gaming, possibly drop our customers, which will let me buy more gas, and, you know, allowing them to increase revenues for his, for his business, and also for the village to do gas sales tax, things like that. Uh, and also, I remember what that property looked like before Jay bought it, and that property was a dumpster. And he, it was 25 years ago, whatever it was, you know, put a lot of time, effort, and money into that property. And he's always been trying to figure out ways to, to make it a successful property. Um, you know, he's trying to subway shop, and saddle shop, things like that. And again, you know, we're not, we're not putting video gaming machines in a church or over at a hospital, we're putting them in a gas station. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not, no offense, Jay, but you're not at our destination anyway. You know, only your gas station, your, your facility or your property. I personally don't see the harm, and I could actually see some benefit of granting this request. But again, that's my opinion, and just why I feel away.
And I'll add to that, across the board, and it's nothing against your establishment, Jay, I go there probably more than any other gas station in town, but, uh, in general, as opposed to video gaming as a whole, so that's, that's the end of it.
Well, for, for my part, I mean, the work that's gone into bringing it to the condition it is notwithstanding, the idea of circumventing a law that's on the books just to be able to arrive at an end is not really a good idea. I mean, I've, I've struggled with this one, and I've thought a lot about it, and I can see both sides. You know, we did limit at one time through, I don't recall if it was through ordinance or certainly discussion, the idea of, of the number of gaming licenses we were gonna allow. I wasn't in favor of those either. I'm not in favor of increasing them, but I'm certainly not in favor of going around a law that's meant to, you know, achieve a different end. A consumption license in a gas station, even though it, they wouldn't necessarily be serving open liquor or whatever is, is not the point. Um, the idea that we could end up with more than one establishment doing the same thing is, is, you know, a recipe for a problem. So I would have to vote against it.
My concern would be, and just probably your point again, I, I totally respect the, you know, I still like gaming. You know, that's a fair position.
Well, go back to first.
Yeah, but, you know, the fear is, is somebody does what remain financially viable, or at least is gonna love to compete with closely proximate gas stations doing the same thing. The only thing that ever looked worse possibly than having a gaming in a gas station is having enough in a gas station.
Well, true, and I mean, I've, I've, you know, I understand it, and I mean, I, I thought about that too, and, um, I really would struggle that, uh, with the idea that gaming is gonna pull you from the abyss. If you have a situation where it's only gonna be a couple of video game, uh, games that's going to pull you from the brink of bankruptcy, uh, then, I mean, I, I have a hard time buying that, but.
But if everybody else is offering something that you can't, I mean, us versus.
Okay, that's true, but, you know, I mean, what we have to think about is the next thing down the line. I mean, if the gaming doesn't solve the problem, what will perhaps, you know, some other type of, uh, either, you know, off-color or off-brand type of, of approach to, to raising revenue? What do we want it to be? You know, I mean, I mean, you can, you can make any argument we want that'll go against the grain of what the establishments are supposed to be, and, you know, pretty soon you've got a real mess. I don't know, I, I just, uh, the idea though of that we're going to allow consumption license in gas stations really does not support. We humiliate, we like, say, they're not likely to serve. Um, and if they're not, then the idea is to deliver a circumvention of the law.
Right. You may, you may, I mean, again, it's, I don't know, I think circumvention is a, it's a common word, I mean, it's, it's an available, available vehicle. That's it, that's, that's available to the village.
But I'd be available in the sense that we would imagine, I would have available license, in a way that the state has put out, put forth as a means to circumvent, and it's, only that people have found to work around the law. It's not, it's not a state, uh, you know, deemed solution to the problem. No, but I mean, it is a loophole. What we're talking about doing is, is allowing for a license that if, you know, he has a license that'll allow for consumption of alcohol on the establishment and on the premises, that'll allow him to get the gaming, which is the end.
Right, but then I agree.
Agree.
I agree with you. And, I mean, you have to think about, we already have other gas stations in town that don't have the games, and they don't have a, a consumption license, and now we're wanting to say, if we say yes to this, we're wanting to say no to this. Or we have no reason not to. A precedent.
Instead of precedent, I, I allow it for these other events. Jay, I have a question for you. Um, when you came before us before, you said you were experiencing a drop in your sales gallons per month, and you were returning it, meaning to the opening of Casey's, um, down on East Street and West Dundee, and that they were cutting pricing. Have you found any kind of bounce back, um, now that they've been open for a while? I, I've pulled up the local gas prices, and they're in line with Thornton's and BP and, and everything else, so, um, they're, they're, and today they're at exactly the same price.
See, month of November, we were nine percent now, and December, we are still four percent now compared to 2018. And, uh, even though our profit margin went down big enough, because the more gas station open, and we have 13,000 population in town, with, including West and the, and the, I believe. So they have option to go to the new places, and they keep going to the new places. And the only remedy that I think that in order to bring more people in our location is you have to give some kind of opportunity. Basically, the one, one customer wants to play game, at the same time, he buys everything from them. So I'm looking at a regular customer, and I've been here since 1999. Very successful businessman in East Dundee Town. I didn't leave this town. And since last three years, it's hurting us, it's hurting big time. That's all I can say. I need the support from city.
Just, just drilling down into the numbers that you shared with us, thank you very much, was, um, is, is the percentage of four percent and the nine percent that you shared, is that, um, gallons per month?
No, no.
Or is that dollars per month? And how, how does that relate to the average gas prices 2018 to 2019?
Fifty percent down. We used to sell two trucks a week, which is 16,000 gallons a week. Now we are down to eight thousand, eight and a half because of the other gas stations. And because of the Casey, they lower the price, and Shell and Speedway match with it. I can't, because they are losing 23 cents. Like now, well, like now, we are making, this week we are making money, but November, December, they were, they were giving us. And we are down to 2,000 gallons a day. Now we are 800, 900 gallons a day. You know, and now I'm worried about the Speedway on Rock Road.
Well, based on, just based on the gas spending prices that are here, Speedway is actually higher, um, over in West Dundee than everybody else.
No, Speedway is 240, 246 today, and the Shell is 258. I check the price three times a day.
Yeah, I'm sure you do, okay, so right now it says Speedway is 257. So anyways, everybody's gonna set their prices the way they want to, so, um, alright, thank you.
I'm in favor of this because Jay's been a great asset to this village, and it would be a shame to lose that revenue and an opportunity to get more revenue. You know, we can bring more in for the village, and we need money for infrastructure. So I would say it's, I think it's a preemptive decision because we don't need to lose any more businesses. We need to keep all the businesses we got, and we got a great businessman here.
Jay, what's your square footage?
Sorry?
Your square footage of the store?
For a game machine?
No, for the whole store.
Uh, 800, 20, 800.
I'm just trying to do a mental comparison of size-wise, how that compares to the Casey's or the Speedway. It's 40, I don't know.
And I would like to use 160 square feet for game machine.
So just, uh, drive to the elevator if I can. How much do you think this is honestly based on location and ease of access into your facility? I mean, you've been, I don't know how many parking spaces you have, it's not a lot. But if I look at the layout of Speedway, or if I look at the layout of Casey's, they're probably twice the size. They probably have 10 times the parking, and they probably have a much easier flow getting it out. Do you think that that's part of the reason why people are adapting to a newer place? Or, you know, maybe it's like, go to the newer place because I want to check it out, and it's clean and it's new and all that stuff, and maybe they have something to offer besides video gaming?
Both, both. Obviously, new facility, and price is right, price is good for the customer, and they have obviously enough parking because it's a, uh, I believe it's three-acre land.
And what's the others?
Altogether, three acres land are a little bit more or less.
Would, would you be serving alcohol there?
If I had a game machine?
Well, I mean, you, you have, the way that the state law works is we would have to change our ordinance to allow you to sell and pour liquor.
Of course, yeah.
You don't have to, but you would have to have that license.
Yes.
Is your intent that you would be serving people alcohol, or?
In the game machine area only.
Okay.
I guess it's probably someone's, you know, you're stealing their dollars. Probably their, their, your service, like a little countertop cooler with beers.
Is that being intelligent?
Sorry?
Is that, would it be similar to dollars?
Yes. The small cooler right by the game machine and be served.
I'd like to ask George his opinion on that regarding a, in general, liquor being served at, basically, it's a gas station. If, as far as the control and accountability and possible risks involving, you know, overserve or whatever, from your profession standpoint?
I really don't have an opinion on this. I mean, the village is gonna do whatever you decide. You know, whatever you decide, we'll, we'll make adjustments.
Understood.
If we have.
They would have to decline, obviously, they would have to go through the proper training procedures, and they would be responsible for any incidents that happen, whether somebody's overserved, or somebody fell down, or the case was there, and then they would be responsible for that.
Or drive away.
Right, would be calling before the local permission, just like we're all.
Yeah, they kind of get frame shot, chances of the gas attorney first half.
I think what you're, what maybe you're trying to do would is the fact that, you know, you're coming and you're coming by yourself to get the answer. Play, and then you're driving away.
I mean, if your perception is.
Right, if you're going to maybe an establishment, you're going with others, or maybe a designated driver, um, this is kind of like a solo activity. And, and, you know, it's, I think it's a, it's a bit different.
Absolutely. And now, this is again, nothing against you, Jay, because like I said, you're the most, the play sector for most in this village, and I'm mostly guessing. I just think this is a bad idea from a perception standpoint. I think it's a bad idea from a precedent standpoint, and I don't think that the gaming business was introduced into the state of Illinois to be implemented in this type of situation. And, and that's the way I look at it.
I'd like to apologize for suggesting that the whole purpose behind this request was to circumvent the law to get to a different end. But now, if the fact that you are going to serve, your intention is to serve it, I have to say I'm in less favor of it, so.
At the end of the day, how is this different? Again, I'm just playing that to have a game of conversation purposes. How is this different to Dallas where a single person will play out there, play the video games, still have a beer, and go home?
I don't think.
The comparable would be if Dallas decided that they were putting a mobile gas pump, so we'd be opposed to that.
I would like it.
Second.
More gas taxes, sure.
The, the question I have at a higher level is, we talked about this setting a precedence on two other gas stations that we have in town.
Which, which two are those?
Well, they have a mobile station, and then whatever the one is on, on 68.
Yeah, that's, that's a fresh one. I don't think that's just a big enough old machine.
Well, and then Shell, yeah, two Shell.
But that is kind of, the point isn't that even if your park isn't big enough, we're now opening the door for them to find ways to hold the machine.
Those people will be able to pay out next to Shell, for, you know, to Shell.
Right, that's what I'm saying, even if it's.
But then are we eliminating to even those gas stations? I mean, if, what if somebody that's not a gas station says, hey, I want to get that too?
I was providing, for the lawyer, with an example of a previous town where a laundromat wanted to buy the unit next to them and open something so that there would be gaming, and that immediately happened after the city approved gaming. So the requests started coming in that were unique, out of box, like, we denied that.
Well, I mean, if we were to go something to this multi-mod before Speedway comes to us, or, you know, like you say, mobile or any of the others, to say, well, we would like to serve liquor in our, our gaming section, and, so it's, it's.
So... I'm not sure where all this, this, uh, there's no vote. There's no vote that I, that I mean this. Yeah, do we have a consensus? I guess I'll just ask Shawan, who's in favor of moving forward with this? So, um... I'm not sure that there's a way around this at this point. I'd like to see if we can work with you to see if there's other opportunities that we can help you with to help make your business more successful.
I would suggest my thoughts. In Eastundy, all the gas station has a gaming machine, except me and the one on twenty-five.
Well, the one on sixty-eight, that's a Shell.
Well, sixty-eight, I really don't consider it because they are going to close pretty soon again.
They, I I get it, I, they're not a favorite person for it.
So, that, when you look at the atmosphere, if the big gas station has a gaming machine and the small gas station has a gaming machine, it's the same thing. The only thing is they have, they have big land and I don't.
Oh, yeah, but that's the state, that's the state law, unfortunately. And I guess, you know, obviously, Jay, we all love you in your business and we want you to be successful. I spend all my gas money in town at your place, you see me in there all the time. I don't go in, I wouldn't stop in there specifically just to gamble, and I have to say that's probably eighty percent of the people. So, I mean, I don't look out for a place that has gaming when I go out to get gas. Now, there are going to be some people that are different. The Fortunes doesn't have anything yet, I know the Shell doesn't have anything yet. And then what about the the mobile that's on twenty-five? We'll check and play. They don't have that yet either. So, in reality, I think the only thing that will have something in town, at least in the, at some point in the future, is gonna be Speedway and Fortunes. So that doesn't help you, but... So I would like to see if if we can work with you and try and come up with some idea other than this because it doesn't look at this point like the board is going to, uh, want to set a precedent here. I think that would be, uh, it's about all I can tell you at this point. So, do you wanna get together at some point in the future and see if we can work on what idea we can help you with? All right.
I think the procedural matter, I hear that a trustee was made, or a trustee, a lineman made, and trustee was seconding the motion on this matter. I think you can just withdraw the motion at this time, so there's no action being taken. I'll withdraw my motion, thank you.
All right, you have a warrants list, your packet there, all that sort of stuff. I have no report this evening, we're on the table, trust itself. Trusty Andreessen?
Uh, we had a, uh, town committee meeting this evening, uh, discussing a new logo for the Village of Eastundy.
Yeah, I told you.
Also discussing the fact that there's probably three or four different iterations of the Rock River, I should come live and... We have, you know, three or four different logos and branding and, you know, kind of what the goal is right now is to kind of clean up that mess. Move that with, uh, you know, a unified branding for the village, uh, whether it be through like the logos of a color scheme or whatever, and then all uses of that branding, also using some signage, uh, you know, downtown in the Rock City too, uh, to focus on some of the assets of our village. But I believe that will be coming before the board, probably maybe, yeah, a long day. Yeah, a long day.
So, just a quick comment, I saw the, uh, the graphic I had, I really like it. My my one and only comment, because I'm a stickler for this, this is something I've always had. You've got established on there, and I know people like to look at that. I would suggest that somebody goes out and looks around at other towns just to see what they have on there because established in my mind doesn't really mean anything. It it's it's a good look, right? I started my business, I put a sign on there, I said, "Establish twenty sixteen," which, you know, wasn't that long ago. But it's it's a good look and I like the way that looks too. But for a village, you know, when was it founded, when was it settled, when was it established, when was it chartered, on and on and on. You can pick a, a wide range of it.
We talked about like, you know, when was, you know, when was there kind of like more than just somebody's city on land? You know, like when was there kind of like a, like a centralized, like government or like a leadership of the community or, you know, you know, I guess there was a boat to, you know, become a village, but then there was the paperwork of like thirteen years.
Well, that, that was actually to incorporate.
Okay.
We were here much longer before that.
Well, that's the thing, and they get, I'd be very interested in seeing, because again, to your point, you're right. But, you know, maybe actually putting some research into whatever, whatever, trying to figure out when Eastundy actually started and, you know, kind of coming to consensus like, do I start kind of, you know, all different families came together and said, we're gonna have a town.
Yeah, I mean, my comment would simply be figure out what you want that to be, is it, you know, what do you consider the origin?
Yeah.
Right?
And you can say, found and established.
Because because downtown, if you look at all buildings on Iberia Street, we're all built in the fifties and so on. And to say it's established in eighteen eighty-seven, I'm not sure where that fits in. So I just, I'm just wrong on here.
Sure, no, you're, you're saying right.
So those buildings in Iberia were built in the eighteen fifties?
Eighteen seventy, eighteen seventy-five, seventy-five, something like that.
So they could have been here without the town being incorporated, obviously.
Well, incorporation is the time, the the way that the state law might work was, you were either a town, a village, or a city based on your population. Just like home rule, they changed the law to say, okay, it's not based on that, you can vote it in. And so like incorporating after eighteen seventy-two, when they changed the law, you could become a village or you can become this. And incorporation gave you different legal stats. So all the towns around here all day of the same week, we just filed our paperwork on, to give a back to. And, okay, um, can you do other things?
No.
My thing is that we have the other, um, community events workshop Monday. I wish I'd attended the community events workshop and had some really great participation from the food vendors and really good conversation about what they, makes sense for them. And we'll be sharing that, I didn't share it with you individually. But I think we'll be trying to have more participation, more consistent number of food vendors, and actually sharing a lot of the information between food vendors, so that they're, everybody's serving couples, um, kind of thing. And, um, there's a lot of energy, a lot of energy. They were all in favor as well of doing consistent tents and manners and getting the formats for menus. So they can focus on what they can really do and what they're really good at, which is serving awesome food.
What about food trucks?
We did not talk about food truck because that's just pretty much for Mondays, Monday.
Right. Well, we're all.
Did we talk?
Food trucks, we talked about.
There are other times. Well, but.
Nobody brought it up.
The discussion was filled, it it came up in the individual groups.
Oh, it did?
And when the discussion, basically, they said, we hear you, we're gonna step up.
Oh.
So that that's where, that's where the direction went. So the food trucks was was thrown out there, but they, we started out the workshop with what is the purpose of the events? And we communicated to them that the purpose of the events is to support them. And so all, they heard that and they understood that we needed to be there and they need to be accountable. Actually, one of the groups came up and they said, basically, if we don't show up, fire us. No shows, you're fired. And so that was the outcome, that they really want, and they want this opportunity to participate fully. And they wanna make sure that if they are participating, that they they show up. Would you agree, trustee?
Yeah, and the other thing that they, I communicated to them that this is a perfect opportunity to market themselves. That we can also, that basically that is an opportunity to give, even if they're not a vendor for that particular event, put something on the menu for wine day Wednesdays, a wine day Wednesday special, so that it can be consistent and cohesive.
Sure.
Um, kind of a marketing presentation, as well as doing giveaway coupons for, you know, combat for free dessert if you buy a matra. That, whatever they wanna do, but as the comebacks to start the whole flywheel effect, to bring people back to their businesses. So, it was good.
We will be, um, we're preparing a report, um, that we'll distribute with the summary of the workshop that we might be.
Yeah, unfortunately, I was, I ended up having a last minute thing I had to be at at my, my age job. So, couldn't make it. And I wanted that sandwich.
It was delicious.
Come here and had it.
Should've. The only other thing I have is, um, a couple months ago, I brought the, um, Rock twenty-five with some of the used car dealers that are, particularly the one that was the old pay rental company. They still do have their sign of, that is a banner, which is against our signage rules, and it's affixed to their building. Granted, they affixed them even her, more permanently, instead of getting an appropriate approved material for the signage. And, um, however, the other car dealer that used to be Mural Motors, they repainted it, and like that view of the sign looks clean. It doesn't look, um, have, I think, it looks like a really legitimate used car dealership or is legitimate as a good used car dealership could have. So, that was a positive. But I would really like, um, that followed up on, to make sure that more permanent signage is, if they're gonna put it on the side of their building, that it's permanent. The other new car dealer, uh, used car dealer, where Mural was, doesn't even have anything on the building yet, maybe. It's made a little past, I think, that's appropriate, we don't have, um, regulations.
Okay. First line?
Uh, no.
First of what?
No.
First of closing, um, important. Hold the most right.
Um, I want to remind you that a planning and building commission will be having a public hearing on cannabis item this Wednesday, six o'clock at the senior center, so if that's six o'clock, then seven, um, if you would like to attend, um, to attend. That's all I have.
Okay. Turning, no report. And to mirror, order. If you guys wanna get out of here, it's back. Chief?
No report.
The works. You have enough salt left this year?
We have, only, yeah.
Good. All right, building officials not here, finances not here, so we'll take public comment from anybody in the room. Give us your name and address.
There's only one left.
Yeah, we ran them all out. Get your name and address.
Excuse me, my name's Chris Kaya. I am, I reside at three forty Winey Candy Way in Algonquin. I'm the county board member for District Twenty-three, up in the north end of there, so mostly Algonquin and Carterville. But I've been visiting, uh, other villages with interest and I must, I'm amazed every time I visit one, just how important it is that I witness the kind of things that you guys go through, even though it's a small village, it's big, tough decisions, very personal. So I commend you for your service. I am, I was just elected last, or a year ago, the fall, so I'm still a freshman now. County board member, I'm on the, well, I'd like to just mention a few things so you guys can get out of here early, or out of here on time. The, uh, I'm on a member of, we formed a King County Complete Counts Commission, I don't know if you've heard of that. Uh, some of the villages have a complete count commission. We're looking for funding, but we didn't get it, so what we are doing is reminding the villages and organizations to participate in the upcoming census, which will, they'll be mailing cards out in middle of March, and April first is the, uh, the dead, or the date that it'd be registered, that you can reg, you can, with, they send out a card that has a number that you can register online and then, uh, count, who's at your house, business. And, uh, the library also over here will have a, uh, here will have a, uh, desk committed just to that, as part of their trails program to register people. As we know, the, uh, by dancing and representation is based on census, so a complete count is very important, especially small towns and counties. And, uh, the, they're all, also mentioned too, that they are, my last report, they're well behind on hiring for temporary employees. So if you have something in this, in your village or employment, that, uh, to encourage employment, there's a twenty-twenty census dot gov slash jobs for, I think it's fifteen dollars an hour. And I think it's very, when I, we have a meeting, a trading session, and it's very flexible for the hours they contribute and what they can do to participate and make money, so, uh, that. And if you have any questions, actually, Mo will call, who's the, who's the county board members, who's the chairman of the committee. So you can get all of me or Mo on that, for more information, most of them involve, I'm passing on information. But I can make sure that if there's some, you have a question, I can, uh, get back to you on it. Also, I'd like to mention, also, we had the, just recently, the thirtieth, uh, anniversary edition of our green guide that the county publishes every year. It has, uh, besides some posters in the area of the hill here on, uh, where and how to recycle. Both Spanish and English. There's a, there's a listing here from A to Z on what, so, come up, whenever you have a question about what it is that you wanna recycle, that it's recyclable, the information will be in here. I have about ten or fifteen of these, and I'll be with some of them, you can pick up or pass around. And if you have, if you want more, I can make sure you get it, you can get it from our, uh, recycling people at down at the, at the county site in Geneva. I, unfortunately, I switched cars with my wife today, and I don't have my car. I'd like to hand out a flyer on the, the fabulous Fox River Water Trail that the county's been working on in development, to eventually hopefully establish a, a national water trail, because there's been several of them established in the United States for the Fox to draw, uh, canoeers and kayakers as a tourist destination to bring, uh, people down through the, on the Fox River, uh, where they will, uh, parkage, can stop, and hopefully stay and reside and spend money and bring money to the, because the, the Fox is an amazing resource. Of course, I know I'm, you probably, I get my political kayak and go fishing on the Fox. But, uh, and I, I'll make sure that I bring some flyers next time, I usually have a big stack of them. You can pass out and get the, or have a review to display or something that people can pick up. Another very popular machine of commerce. But there's also a website, if you Google fabulous Fox River Water Trail, uh, you can go in on the web, on the internet, they now have established maps for different areas, like about eight different areas, that show you where to get on the river, where to give off, the, the accessibility, and things to watch for. And we're looking for input on that. Karen Miller is the individual, like, she's probably, well, she knows she's listed in the flyer. But also on the website, you can get ahold of, if you have some, something that you're excited about on Fox, uh, that you do that you think would be fun, or somebody that you notice that on the websites is, you, it, there's a, an access point that is not on there that you know about, that the public can get access to. What we wanna do is make it really accessible so people could take a day, half a day, a week, go all the way down the Fox. Because it starts, you know, up in Wisconsin, it goes all the way down to Ottawa, so it's a big deal. It's a big river. I, as a member of the county board, I'm also on the, uh, the forest reserve as well, there's more than forest reserve. And we have established, uh, we have, uh, a retreat, which sounds way more romantic than it was, it was no, that's the, uh, forest reserve. And we were establishing capital funding, uh, projects for the future. We have a number of them going on all the time, we have maintenance projects going on all the time, as well as capital funding. Some of the top, in the top ten that are, uh, put on the list, you know, they're worked down, so they, they, they may jump up, they sort of finish faster than they're allowed, or than others that have become more critical. Raceway Woods over here, Ross Circle will be having a new entrance road and parking trail connection. That's on the list, it's not being funded yet, but it's, they'll be moving up the list as part of the top ten. Switzer will be having a, uh, what's called the Pothole Marsh and Wood Rest, Woods Restoration, which is gonna be a big, big project. And right up here on this side of the river, at Fox River Shores, they'll be working on the FIM, it's a capital project. And right up here on this side of the river, at Fox River Shores, they'll be working on the fin, it's a capital project in the near future as well. And if you have any questions, I like to visit more often, if, you know, like, once every, the month or something, especially if something comes up that's, that would be important to the village here. Because I'm, I drive through here every day, I go down to downtown and, you know, take you to lines.
And you give us an update on Long Island Parkway?
Long Island Parkway is quiet for the, the winter right now. We just, it's just going through committee right now, it'll be an executive committee this next Wednesday, I believe, to establish the toll on the bridge. It'll be, finished, the parkway shouldn't be finished in twenty twenty-one, I think they were saying twenty, late twenty twenty, but I think it's going to be twenty twenty-one. They acquired the properties, the right ways on the east side of the river. So if you've been up Williams or San Blue, you'll see that the bridge goes only so far, well, that property between twenty-five and San Blue had to be acquired, it's been acquired. We just voted and approved the amount of money to settle those, so they should be starting in the spring on those to finish it up.
Do they have to do them in a, don't they, now?
I don't think so, I think they're working so that they agree with everybody. Wouldn't draw it up anymore. I think they, they saw the writing on the wall. Sort of showing the money.
Yeah.
Eventually one point to pay the money, I was here.
Okay.
Few little, little change here and there in transportation department.
Does it, the discussion then had concerning funding in the event that the toll doesn't succeed?
But it's going to, then we go back to the county. The, as it is right now, it's guaranteed with RTA, I believe, the gas acts, RTA to ask. So it's, it was first established at ninety-five cents one way. They're working on a program right now to have, and that's part of the voting process, we're going through right now, is to establish, those people that are going to use it regularly could pay two hundred dollars a month. And if they use it every day for a year, they would get it down to possibly, you know, both ways, thirty-eight cents. I've introduced amendment to that ordinance, it's an ordinance, to have King County residents excluded from the tolling altogether. And.
Sounds good.
But I think so too. It's pretty easy, a King County bridge. Why are we paying for, I got, and I'm on the east side of Algonquin, so if I want to go over to the west side.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, if you got carbon, if you got a frame of carbon, they want to go over here, they want to use the bridge, it's going to cost ninety-five cents.
Yeah.
I want to go get a gallon of milk on the other side, I would act and pour the water. It's going to be, you know, almost two bucks. I will be, we're introducing my amendment again when it comes to the whole board, because I'm not in, I'm not an executive committee, so I won't see it again until, I will be sitting in that meeting. I won't see it again until that time, I think it would be appropriate to either, well, my grant is if either we put, we remove all of the King County residents who will pay for all the other bridges, the half, the half bridges. Or we toll all the other bridges as well, because they have fifteen to twenty years to pay for the bridge, pay for the bond, and pay for the bridge. Then another fifteen to twenty years, pay for the maintenance of the actual, so not only do we pay for the bridge, we have to pay for the maintenance of the bridge. No other bridge up and down, well, there are no other bridges in the state of Illinois that are toll, that are minor tollways, city streets, county roads, that are toll bridges. This is the only one, this is the only one.
If you don't tax King County residents, how long does that go, so fifteen to twenty years, how long does it take to pay it off? Good question.
It depends on how many use it, they do not, they, part of the, the argument is that the, a lot of the money's going to come from, I think that was originally, well, it's going to be coming from McHenry County. They're going to be coming across from Humley and using it, and that's where we'll get most of our money, which is fine, I think, you know, if they come across there and use it, that's fine.
Adding our amendment to the restriction on the increase in property taxes for King County residents. It's not going to be, it's not going to be.
But we'll see, it's hard to argue that something is not happening yet, I don't, I, I've talked to a lot of people, maybe I've talked to the wrong people if they're, people I talk to are not really in favor of paying a tax, or a toll. A user fee, although a whole user fee to do it, so. Unfortunately, I don't think I could introduce something to, for a property tax limit in that venue. This is like bridge though, so I've, well, I guess I could introduce. It may be successful with the other part.
It's a beautiful road.
What's that?
It's a beautiful road, thank you for your work.
Oh, it's, it actually is a, it's, I love, it's issues I talked to, I think it's a beautiful, I thought we should have a road too.
Yeah.
I thought maybe something like, don't put it across Reddick, which is a nice, beautiful road, it's small, doesn't destroy it, the neighborhoods like where the, on the other side of the river, conducts a lot. This is four lanes, it's going to be big, it's a big one.
We need more like that.
Okay, anyone else for us?
No, we have, if you have any questions, fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, folks, unfortunately, there's no executive session this evening, so.
Come on!
No, we tried, we tried, but we get our motion, we're, we're earning it.
I'm bigger.